Okay, I'll start, I'll start us off everybody so that we can be as punctual as possible. I know that this is an odd time and it's also a beautiful night. So good evening, everybody. Tonight is Thursday, June 3rd, 2021. This is a 6:00 PM meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. Tonight's meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform. For those that are interested in participating in the Zoom platform, you can find the link at the top of our posted agenda on the town's website. The meeting will be recorded and will be available for watching at a future time. We'll start our meeting off with a roll call vote.
Jack Creighton here.
Rory Evans here.
Paul Schubert here.
Diane Kennedy here.
Carrie Thompson here.
Great, thank you, everybody. So tonight, originally, we were, we were in our scheduling, we're planning to start reviewing some of the questions and putting together the questions for the interview process for council. But we had only heard at that point from one board formally in writing, so we decided to use this meeting as an opportunity to hear from particularly our permitting and land use boards who are really on the front lines of a lot of our legal work in town. Get their inputs for both questions and comments that we will be seeking out from our respondents to the RFP. And so what we're going to do this evening is I'm going to turn it over to Michelle just to kind of summarize where we're at in the process and the submissions that we've received from the boards in terms of questions and and prompts that we should consider at a later date for the interview protocol. And then I'm going to ask some of our guests from the boards that are joining us tonight to join us and just summarize kind of their boards' comments and ideas as we go forward in the RFP process. And then I'll we'll turn it back over to Michelle before we adjourn. So with that, Michelle, thanks for being here.
Thank you. So as everyone knows, we went onto RFQ for legal services for four categories. We're looking for town council, environmental and land use, special council and labor council. We've had three full-service firms request that they be considered for all of the above. And we've had two firms that just have chosen two specialty areas. We received feedback from the select, some select board members, zoning, planning and conservation. Wonderful questions and comments. I would say compiled for town council purposes, we probably have a solid 15 questions to ask. And as far as environmental land use, we probably have about 20 questions that we can consider asking. Some of the questions were redundant. Everyone has the same idea of what they'd like to see and what they'd like to hear. So what my recommendation is moving forward is that we send 15 questions to each firm. What I'd like to do is a blind response, so we don't know who's giving us the response. Of course, I'll know, but no one else will know. And since I don't have any stake in choosing the town council or environmental land use council, I would like to present you with their responses to their questions. And you can review from there. And that is something that'll prompt you during the interview process. I've outlined a timeline to accomplish this task. And what I wanted to be mindful of is this weekend's election. So I would like to send all of the questions in advance to the board. Have your review and I'll pine on them for for the weekend and see what you think. And on June 8th, sorry, you won't have the weekend. I'll send them to you on June 7th. If you could review them and then we can discuss them on June 8th. Finalize all the questions, finalize what we believe the interview protocol should be and finalize the invitation to the selected firms. I'd like to send those questions in advance to all of the firms on June 9th. And on June 17th, I'd like to conduct some formal interviews. And then that leaves us on June 22nd to deliberate an award council. That is a tentative timeframe I have written up. I'm certainly open to feedback. I'd like to hear what everyone has to think. But I know in the past, we've always wanted things in advance. So this would give everyone the opportunity to review the questions prior to the meeting and add additional feedback or recommendations. And like I said, the boards and committees have been great and they've given us a great starting point. So I think we have, we have a lot to go by at this point.
Michelle, just, just a clar, just a clarification on on, on sending the questions to the firms, we'll send them both the interview questions that they will do in person and actually maybe in person otherwise on Zoom or some combination thereof. And we'll also send them so they'll know ahead of time what they're going to be asked in the timeframe that they're going to be presented to us. And then we'll also send them other questions so that we make sure we cover as many of the bases as possible that they will respond to in writing in advance of their interview. Is that the recommendation?
Yep, that's correct. So we would set, set two sets of questions. One that they'd respond to prior to their interview. One that they should be prepared for during their interview. Everybody gets the same questions because it has to be a fair and even playing field. So we have to make sure that we ask the same questions consistently. Which leads me to another recommendation. As far as the hiring authority for town council services. It really should be the, the select board. And as far as questions, we have to have those questions in advance because everyone has to be asked the same series of questions. So if there's questions that the boards and committees would like to ask, please send them to me and we'll definitely incorporate them because your feedback is extremely valuable. But for the night of the interviews, we have to make sure it's an evil, an even playing field.
Great. Okay. So if it's all right with the board unless you have any questions, what I'd like to do is invite the, the representatives from the committees and I hang on one sec, Jack. I did notice that Jay Pampari is here and I, I know that CONCOM has a meeting tonight. So if, you know, if we're inviting and I assume Jay, you're here for, for that purpose to represent the comments of CONCOM. So anyway, Jack, you had a question?
Well, I want to, about the whole procedure, I have some observations. But I think if Jay of Conservation is here and he has another meeting, let's listen to what he has to say. But then I do have some comments.
Great. So Tracy, if you would promote Jay and Jay, if you're not here for that reason, I assume you are.
He's on his way in.
Thanks.
Hi, thank you very much. I do have another meeting. A CONCOM meeting is at 6:30. I do very much appreciate the opportunity to comment tonight, but I will defer to the formal comments that were submitted by our Chairman Chris McFarland. I believe he has submitted those comments to the select board, so I would defer to those. But I very much appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. Thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Jay. Appreciate it. And the board received those. Okay, yeah. And Michelle, more importantly, received those because she's basically aggregating them all and that's what we'll review at some point next week. Jack?
Yeah, on the procedure, I'm a big believer in transparency and everything, all aspects of everything needs to be out in the open. These things that have been sent in, they should be posted on the website. So anybody can read them.
Thank you. They're there. Thanks for clarifying that. I forgot to mention that. So all of the RFP responses, the select board has had them since I think probably late April, but they are on the town website. So Michelle, if you have that link or where people should go looking for it because it is a little difficult to navigate the town website.
So, um, so you can find it by going under the procurement page. And if you look at active bids, you'll see it down below and you'll see RFQ responses and they're all in there.
Even the, I'm talking about the comments from the boards and commissions.
Oh, sorry, Jack. No, those haven't been posted yet. I wanted to speak to the board tonight before posting those.
Well, that's a public record. I think they need to be posted. And I also think it'd be very helpful if we had something done on the website so people could find it, you know, easily. Because I think, and I think all of the prospective applicants for town council should have all of those. And I'd like to hear their comments. I also think when they make an answer, I'd like to see very transparent which I don't want to filter between me and what they say. I know some of the attorneys and I know some of their performances. I look forward to learning more, but I want to know who says what, when. I see there's no putting a filter between full transparency, I think is is a problem. I think it's, it's not consistent with the open meeting, with the open meeting law. So I do have a concern about that. Just transparency and everything should be, should be written. I want to know who's saying what. And, and I think everything that we know as members of the select board should be prominently and easily accessible to all members of the community.
Yeah, I agree. Michelle, go ahead. You're gonna.
The only reason I was recommending the, the blind question process was because we have relationships with all of the the legal firms that, you know, have, have applied for this process. And to take away any bias of past relationships, past feelings, I just thought it may be best not to see who it is. But if it's your desire to see who's responding, then that's fine with me.
Trans, and, and you're doing a good job. And I could clearly see why you were thinking that way. And I understand there's all kinds of things going on, but as public officials doing the people's business, I think the people need to know everything that, that we know. And back and forth, we're all kind of grown up.
Great. So I do want to talk about it amongst the board members about in terms of the blind responses, which you know, I think that's something we should discuss. Carrie, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I was going to mention that too. I also agree with Jack about the website. I know Cory agrees with that. It's a really hard website in general to navigate, which I think we're going to be working on next year or this upcoming year. But it would be nice if we could maybe put it on the main page of the website, a link to access them. I think that would be great. I do see the reason why it could help to do the blind reviewing, but correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, eventually we find out who wrote each answer, right? By the interview night, like there, there is a I mean, we do this a lot in academia for grading purposes, right? Like sometimes it is really helpful to get more unbiased grades by not knowing who wrote something, but I'd be okay with that. And I think it's smart if eventually we do find out by the interview time who wrote which response.
Yeah, I want to get into all this, but I just, I don't want to, I'd like to hear from the committee members before we get too deep into it because I don't want to cut the conversation off. And then so if you wouldn't mind, just jump into that.
Yep. So fair enough. Any other comments right now, just in terms of the collection of, so the R, all of the responses to the RFQ are on the website. Michelle and staff are going to work on getting those easily accessible. And then also the, the submitted questions by kind of bucket area. It will be up there as well. So thanks for that. And then we have Amy from Planning Board and Woody Chitik joining us from ZBA. Amy, would you like to go first? And I know you submitted your comments. Thank you very much. They were sent, we got those this morning. And if you could just summarize and you know, let us know where your thoughts are on this process.
Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of the Planning Board. We met last night and we discussed a, a fine list that was developed by Tom Callahan. I then took that list and added some additional information to it and submitted it this morning. So I, I think the, the way to summarize it is to understand what we do and what we therefore face and where we really need advice. So to begin with, what we work on is land use. And we work on zoning and we work on issues related to local government operations. So we need professionals who are capable of advising us in those domains. We also need legal advice that is available, flexible, and has an, an ability to provide information to us in a timely manner. That's essential since we are often dealing with projects that have multiple presentations before the planning board. And if we don't have legal responses to issues that arise at any one point in time, then we are in a situation of without information and sometimes have to postpone meetings because of that. Another issue that's important is that the, the individual who provides us legal advice understands Cohasset, understands Cohasset's landscape, understands Cohasset's historical zoning regulation and how it has evolved over time, understands our neighborhoods, understands the moments in the history of the changes that evolved in our zoning regulations. All of those actually matter every single time we deal with someone. And that's because we are facing a time of significant increase in land use development. And many of our rules are outdated. So we, in order for us to deal with the present, we have to go back to the past. We have to place things in time. And then we have to look at how neighborhoods and areas of town have changed. So we need somebody that actually makes a commitment to understand us as a place. We need someone who has access to additional legal counsel in areas that they may not them in themselves, the individual person actually know. So for example, when we're dealing with ledge removal, when we're dealing with landscape modification, when we're dealing with large house review, these are particular items to us as a town. But there are other parts of the state that have been dealing with similar issues. Sometimes we could imagine a legal advisor in a specific firm, not knowing the nuances of case law, but we need to be operating using case law for the decisions that we make. And so the individual needs to have a good peer group of people to provide some additional advice to them. We want the, the legal professional who works with us to teach us. We need to know better how to do our job and our job is tied up with the case law. And so we need an individual who is willing to not just tell us something, but actually explain how it came to be and explain how we need to consider it when it comes to its application. We need to have written decisions and advice that is in non-legalese. I am not a lawyer and at least three of the five of us are not lawyers. And so it has to be put in language that we can understand so that we in real time can be effective representatives of the town's best interest. We need advice in crafting bylaws. We need advice in crafting negotiations. We need advice in being able to work with a variety of different kinds of groups with different kinds of proposals. So we really need somebody who has a very fine understanding of the nuances of local land use planning, local zoning and local government. And then finally, we need somebody who is going to be equitable to be essentially a person who can stand between our own opinions, the, the case law, and perhaps even the select board and its position. And we need somebody who will be even and, and act as an advisor rather than, than an individual who has a position and is essentially driving us toward a decision. The board is made up of smart people and they can make effective decisions, but we need the information to do that. But we don't need someone feeling the responsibility to essentially drive us to a decision. We will come to a decision based on consensus. And then finally, there is often an, an issue of research competency. So let me give you an example. Last night we met with the MPIC and we had a brilliant presentation that was developed by Katie Dugan and Cassie. And it was so far superior to what you would imagine. I mean, I placed it as a $50,000 consulting job. And, and, but it was necessary, the level of detail was necessary for us to be able to understand what's gone over, over the last 70 years so that we can make an effective decision. So we need an organization that is a good research organization. One last comment, which is that we do have legal specialization on the board. That needs to be respected and it needs to be worked with. Doesn't mean that it is paramount or that it overtakes any other point of view, but we do have at least two lawyers on the board and their expertise needs to be acknowledged.
Thanks, Amy. And thank you for, for bringing up your presentation last night because I, I think we are incredibly blessed with not only the people serving on the boards and committees and commissions, but Katie and the work that master plan and master plan implementation does has, has really just brought us into a new, a new level of understanding of our roles and, and actually a greater challenge as we have this conversation about legal services because as you, as you noted, we need a lot and we need really strong guidance. And I always say council, lowercase c, council. It's important to all of us to get our jobs, to do our jobs right and to let especially the permitting and hearing boards do their jobs effectively. So Cory has his hand up?
Yeah, Amy, thanks for the, the rundown there. One thing while I was looking through the, the list you gave, I'm really trying to boil things down so we can be really, really clear in our questioning about what expertise and what resources these different firms have. I was really struck by, I think, Jeanne Hilly Dipold and Tom Callahan both at the last meeting mentioned, you know, asking questions about hypotheticals and this kind of stuff. It's really not helpful. You know, saying, you know, hey, we need you to be responsive. You know, that's kind of assumed. But what I think we need to really learn about is the, the areas that you guys need the most support on. So you mentioned during the, the conversation, expertise in ledge removal. That's a huge topic in town and it's very unique to our town. So I'm glad you brought that up. You mentioned large home review, another thing that's on the top of mind. There was a third thing that you mentioned in that and I couldn't write it down fast enough. Do you remember what you said? Because I don't want to forget it.
A land alteration.
Land alteration. Thank you very much. That's fantastic. Yeah, by law creation, these are the things that, you know, when we go into it, you know, we want to be sure that if we're going to assign, you know, council to an area, they have the resources that you need to support. And these are exactly what we need to learn. As, I, I do know that you've got, you said you've got a couple attorneys on the firm. What are their areas of expertise exactly?
Eric Potter and Tom Callahan. Eric is a, a real estate and residential real estate and I think commercial real estate lawyer. Okay. And Tom Callahan is a land use lawyer as well as a, as a quite a bit of expertise in local government. By the way, one of the most expert individuals in town who could really say, what are the critical issues that we need is the, the chair of the, the zoning board. And that's because they deal with the, when things really wrong, yeah, are out of alignment or there is an alignment that has to be found. I would say that Mr. Chitik is a wealth of knowledge that we rely upon. I certainly counsel with him because he, he actually knows the law from decades ago.
Beautiful segue, of course, unless anybody from the board has a question of Amy.
Thank you for allowing us to speak.
You're welcome. And one question I'll just put as, as Woody, as you, as you open up your screen and it's, it's something we probably should discuss when we are reviewing the potential questions. But, you know, is there a difference? And Woody, this might be your, your opening line. Is it, you know, do we really need to look for somebody or two people with areas of expertise in land use and environmental? Because they, they are different. They're, they're, they're similar, but they may be different. And I just would love to know your thoughts in general on that, Woody, before I I hope I didn't ruin your rhythm or your, the show.
I'll get back. I'll get the rhythm back. I, I would put it land use first, environmental second. And I'd like to explain in a moment why I think land use expertise is important today, as Amy has pointed out, but is going to be critically important as we move into the future. And I think that were I choosing, I would at least try to find a practice that has deep land use experience. Amy's board primarily administers the State Enabling Act, Chapter 41. The zoning board primarily administers bylaws that are derived from Chapter 40. These are very important enabling laws, but more to the point. In our case zoning, it's been 45 years, 46 years since the Basic Zoning Act has been updated. Now 46 years is a hell of a long time, if you'll excuse the expression. And as a result, in the intervening years, there have been literally hundreds of court cases that have modified, amplified. And you have to really, it's, you know, the, the framework that, you know, it's like an outline is the State Enabling Act, but it's, but the material, the interstitial material are all the cases that have gone on. And you have to be up to date, not as the year 2005 or 2010, but bringing it right up to the present. So, yeah, I mean, it's I think land use is, let me explain why I think land use in particular. I don't mean to diminish at all environmental law, but there, there is a different, a distinction. Most firms recognize that distinction. Few have practitioners that are that broadly based. But I think we're all aware here that Cohasset's undergoing transformation. Obviously, the master plan, the zoning, Katie Dugan zoning bylaw working group, et cetera, et cetera. But statistically, average home prices have just about doubled in the last two or three years in almost every neighborhood. There are a few that isn't true, but doubled. More importantly, land values are growing even faster. There, we're now seeing million dollar teardowns. At least an $880,000 house of people we know was recently sold and torn down because the land is more valuable than the house. And you can bet that the house that goes up is not going to be quite as compact as the one that went down. So but there's a less obvious consequence to the, this economic, these economic drivers. And that is that older projects never economic are now coming back to life, coming out of the grave. There, there are subdivisions that were approved in 1967 that made no economic sense for over 50 years. And some of these would and some of these would not pass muster by today's standards and bylaws. So we have to deal with that. But developers, when you're sitting on million dollar vacant land, million dollar per acre vacant land, do have the incentive that they never had 10 years ago or 20 years ago to hire the best possible lawyers and try to find ways around through to maneuver permitting boards. And sometimes and I don't blame the lawyers. That's what they're paid to do, but laws are stretched or deliberately misconstrued in the hopes that local boards won't have the experience or expertise or education to sort of separate the fact from fiction. And we get that almost every month when the zoning board meets. There, there's slight misinterpretations of the law, maybe maybe it's a mistake in the part of the applicant's attorney, but I don't think so. They're pretty savvy people. And so I'm worried that as the economic factors continue to, to drive, we're going to be outgunned when developers come before us and Amy's board and the CONCOM. And we're all in this, we're kind of joined at the hip, all, all the boards. When, when developers come seeking waivers and I don't want to really talk about the kind of council we've had in the past, going back decades, but our point, my point is that we've really got to anticipate moving forward, which means hiring the best available firm that can handle land use law. Because this is, these are the situations that might end up in court. Some will, I guarantee you, I can't tell you which, but I'll, I'll, I'll bet you big money that we're going to be in court. I'll 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 bet you big money that we're going to be in court as a town in the next couple of years and I think that every firm claims to have land use expertise and to a degree, that's true. But land use is the most complex, one of these, one of the most complex buckets, if you will, of of town, town council. My experience has been few firms really have kind of a first class team. And and hence, I think you can read or interpret the questions we've put down on paper. I'd like to see or have you people see what they've actually accomplished. It's easy to have a resume, so and so went to Suffolk or Harvard or some other place and blah, blah, blah. But what have they done? Have they been in court cases on the winning or losing side? Do they have any experience at all? In that, I think the old model of town council and it served us, I guess it was appropriate, was reactive. Don't get the town in trouble. Please don't spend too much money. Avoid litigation if 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 you really can. And I think over the years Cohasset has developed an unfortunate reputation is kind of being kind of easy. And and that has nothing to do with current council. It's a, this is a legacy issue. I think a new model has to be much more proactive. Amy got at the issue of training and strategizing and and coaching. And yeah, I think we need town council to help permitting boards, all of us strategically apply the laws as they're written and as they have been modified to be partners going forward to protect the town. And and that's, I I kind of view our role as as trying to preserve the character of the town. It's it's not going back to 1890. It's not prohibiting development. That that's beyond our control. And in fact, a lot of the town does need more smart growth. But I would like to see a good, solid land use firm. Land use expertise. And I don't care whether it's resident in the firm we hired as an all purpose or whether it's a specialty that is, you know, subsidiary, but leave that up to you.
Yeah, and I I'm glad you and both Amy brought up because just looking at the questions submitted by the board, like a lot of this is training. A lot of this is initially with this volunteer government that we have, you know, getting getting the boards comfortable, speaking the language, but also knowing that you have counsel there kind of that has your back and that is looking forward because you you articulated it. There's, there's a lot of money at stake and certainly developers understand, you know, how to how to push the envelope a little bit. And we need to be on top of that. So we're not making decisions that end up getting challenged. That's the, that's the goal, right, is to avoid litigation at all costs. So
Yeah, we can do some some work. We are doing work right now and as as the planning board saw last night in terms of changing, modifying our own bylaws, but that isn't the only answer. We're going to need to, and Amy had it right. You have to think in the fly quite often. And so anyway, that's my pitch for good good land use.
Good counsel. Thanks, Woody. Hang in there. Corey has his hand up and then Paul.
Yeah, hey, Woody, thank you very much for for going through this and don't apologize for pushing land use. I I mean, you know, everyone that's on a board, yourself, Amy, Chris, you know, everyone that's functions on a board, you have a lane and you need to obviously what's what I'm looking for, advocate, you know, as as hard as possible for what you're dealing with. And that's why we're here trying to listen. One thing that really struck me was the idea of not getting outgunned. And you know, what it makes me think of is actually a two way street because one, we don't want to be outgunned, obviously, from other lawyers outgunning us, but also if we feel outgunned, it reduces our confidence in town council. People on the boards are not confident that we're being represented properly. So us having a council that's representing us that the board itself can be confident is just as important as not being outgunned externally. And it 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 seems like there may have been historically some points where confidence wasn't as strong as maybe it could have been. And I think that's certainly something we don't, we want to try to fix. As you said, proactively, instead of looking in the rearview mirror and saying, oh, well, we really could have done a better job. So
Yeah, I I really think that we have an opportunity here to take a, to position ourselves as a town for the next 10, 20 years. Much better than than had had we used a model that's 30 years old. Let me put it that way. I mean, the world is different. We've had to evolve with it.
Just just to riff off that, I mean, you know, it's it's been mentioned all along. We've we've patchworked a lot of things. We've made little changes here and little tweaks there. And it wasn't until the efforts of the master plan that got us a master plan and now really deep diving into the segments of that and prioritizing it that that is getting us to have this more holistic look about just general land use and development and economic development, et cetera. So we've come a long way and now this is the next kind of the, hopefully the icing on the cake to, for all these efforts.
I would like to, I know Paul's got his hand up. I would like to clarify one thing. I haven't mentioned some of the other buckets. Labor and Employment Council thing says, I know nothing about those whatsoever. So I'll, you know, if 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 those take greater priority over land use, so be it.
I I actually don't think so. I think this board, if you read our, you know, our mission statement is you know, the character of this town and the well functioning of it and that Katie Dugan typed in that and she doesn't want to be promoted, but she basically said Woody nailed it. Thank you. Paul?
Yeah, so I I really agree a lot with what we were saying. The the education that we need for the boards is going to be very helpful for for all of the background when you go into a whatever permitting board you may have, whether it's zoning or or planning or Concom, that be able to educate all members on the board of what you can accomplish, what you, what your limitations are, because that's key. The other key thing, which is the land use and, you know, in the next few years, we're going to see an awful lot of land use in town that they will, they'll try to push the envelope to see what they can get. The land is exceedingly expensive now compared to even just two or three or certainly 10 years ago. And the land is going to be very expensive and that will draw very very expensive lawyers and very savvy lawyers and, you know, law firms that will know all of the ins and outs of the esoteric pieces of law that may make, like you're saying, we're not, we're getting outgunned. So that is going to be, I think, a key portion of deciding because this will change, not just now, but it's going to change the what they want to call it, the character or the appearance or the nature of the town, not just now, but 10 or 20 years as we go on. And and the third thing is the the successfulness of any given firm in litigation, because that's a another way to secure that the firm is is got the town's back and that the boards can go to the firm saying, you told us what to look for. We've done what we need and how successful now that we're to the point where the board is going to be taking a court for X, Y, Z matters. And that's, I think, a a big portion as well. That's all I have.
Does that mean Jack has his hand up or what's he doing? No, I do. Thank you, Woody. I think that was very succinct. And I and I do think it's very clear that we need to move forward in our legal structure. Yeah, I'm a consumer of a lot of legal expertise in my business. And the important thing of a good attorney is he lets you know what you can do and what you can't do. And by doing that properly and the boards and commissions having that and all the boards and commissions agree that they need that, that avoids the town getting into a situation where you get into a lawsuit that you're going to lose. We don't want that to happen. And the other thing is, and I'm putting this out for for consideration, I'm not advocating it, but one structure that was presented to us two years ago had kind of a overseer of the legal and then that overseer would then delegate to various specialty law firms various things that needed to be done. And that wouldn't necessarily, in many cases, should not be a member of their own firm. In other words, you have kind of an overseeing firm who keeps track of what all the various law firms and boards and commissions are doing because they frequently, what land use is doing in in zoning will impact or may impact conservation, man pack, planning. So having an overseeing entity and then going to the specifics, that is something I think as a board, as we move forward that we might consider. And I'm not advocating, I just, it was presented two years ago as one of the alternatives. But I do think that the board is really stepping to a very difficult thing and the board really I think needs to be congratulated for recognizing this and moving forward so we can get a legal services for the future that's appropriate for this. So I think we're doing a great job. I'm proud of all members of the board.
Thank you.
I will mute myself then. I'm still going to listen.
Diane, we're losing you.
Diane, are you frozen?
Well, I can always make a motion to adjourn so I can go to my steak dinner.
Questions or comments?
I will add in, I think, I think Diane, can you hear me?
The input again received from everybody is is has been I don't know if I should.
Yeah, just go, Carrie, I think.
Okay. I was, I was gonna say, I think that we have to be careful too, because I I think that maybe Paul brought this up at a different meeting, but when you think about what our town needs, especially with things like land use, you know, we do need the general counsel to ideally do as much as possible, but like it's like going to a doctor, right? The general practitioner verse, you need a cardiologist sometimes to special. So I know that that's something we've been aware of for a lot of years, but I do think we need to thinking about what areas of expertise or specialization we really need. Obviously, I I agree with what both Amy and Woody said, the land use issue is a very big deal. So just thinking about, I mean, in a perfect world, we could have a lawyer be an expert on all things and that's probably not the case. So we really have to be careful about who we choose and pay a lot of attention, I think, to how they answer our questions in the next couple of weeks.
And That's that's interesting. Carrie, that's interesting, the general counsel concept. And and I think we should think about it and we should think, we should think about it anyway.
I agree. Yeah, and and I I I think that, you know, one of the things we originally talked about, Amy, I do see your hand and I'll recognize you in a sec. One of the things we did talk about early on is trying to figure out exactly how we wanted to structure it ahead of time. And I I'm glad we didn't do that because I think we really need to now that we have this input from our, you know, especially our permitting boards who are working in the trenches on land use issues, which are the biggest things, which lead to litigation, which lead to all kinds of things. I really felt like we need to, we need to do these interviews. We need to get to know people and see what gels and how the responses are to the questions and and what we think is is that, you know, who the people are. And then we can see what is actually going to work and we can throw out all kinds of different options, you know. So anyway, Corey, you had your hand. Oh, no, sorry, Amy. I said I didn't recognize Amy and I'll go to Corey and Paul.
So one of the other issues that's sort of lurking in the background is if the boards are being inundated, so is the planning office itself. And I have to say that in a lot of instances, we go into our meetings without the necessary background that can only come from a director of planning that has time to prepare the distillation of what's being presented to us. And we are, we are only a town of 8,000 people, but we are being impacted by development scale that's probably one and a half times our population size. And we don't have the time, that our planning director does not have time to actually sit down, figure out what exactly is being said, figure out exactly what has already happened so that it, so that when we get to to a hearing, we have already got advice from our planner about, okay, here's where your liabilities are, here are where your opportunities are. Here are the things that are baked in stone. There's not much you can do anything about it. Here's what your negotiation position will be. A lawyer is not likely to sit there day in and day out, providing us with that level of expertise. But we need that professional support. And and I can tell you that when we were doing the the negotiations around the harbor plan and we had Eve Tapper as a professional planner there, providing us with sort of assessment and distillation and then direction, it made a huge difference. I mean, we didn't have to, you know, we could tell the difference between the length of the grass, which is what we can't really do right now. We see all the grass the same size and that's not really how it ought to work. So that's a plea for resources to make the planning office more robot.
Am I, am I, can you hear me?
Yep.
Great, thank you. Sorry. Thanks for that, Amy. And that that is another agenda item for another day and I I I totally agree. And I think when we meet and get our our biannual or whatever it is, update from Master Plan Implementation, that is something we need to start talking about is is resources. I mean, I know even in the harbor plan, there, there's so much activity and, you know, a huge list of items and and it really is stressing a relatively small staff. But at the same token, you know, we've made commitments to the community, you know, to keep our operating budget at a at a certain level too. So it's it's an important discussion to have and and council can fill some of that void, but certainly not all. I'm Corey and then Paul.
Yeah, thank you. Amy, I think that's just brilliant because you know, we can add a firm that's got all the resources in the world, but at the same time, we have a resource problem. You know, there's going to be a choke point somewhere. And I think one of the questions that that should be on our list is how do towns that are small deal with an influx like this? Are there, are there bylaw changes that we can make that limits the amount of new building or whatever? We have to have a sustainable way to answer this. I don't think necessarily hiring a bunch of people is the right answer. I don't think necessarily hiring a big firm to show all this together quickly is the right answer either. But a firm that can guide us through that type of decision-making process so we can sustainably do this is enormously important. That's just fantastic as as an idea. So Amy, thank you for that. One question I had for, I don't know who, I guess Michelle's kind of the one who's stuck with answering the question. You know, someone brought up the idea of previous cases and, you know, a firm that understands Cohasset, is it appropriate for us to inquire about other clients? I mean, you know, if we have a, please answer that question because again, that would, you know, if we can ask, hey, what are the towns that are like us that you represent? What are your, what are your results there? Are we allowed to ask those kind of questions?
Absolutely. And as a matter of fact, within the RFQs that they responded to, there are a lot of references to clients that they're representing today or that they have represented in the past. There's also some court cases because I know that's a concern for some, but absolutely, you can ask them almost anything. As much as our process is transparent, so is theirs. So anything, anything that they have to offer us that they've offered to another community is
Yeah, I I know we have all that stuff on the on the town board. It's kind of in a format that I maybe found a little bit hard to digest. Do you have any, an executive summary or a spreadsheet with, you know, you know, what firm and what areas that can kind of just give us a, okay, you have that, do you mind sending that around too? All right, thank you.
Yeah, to, that's a very important point. Ask for everything. When we evaluate firms that we're going to use, we ask for everything they've done and they're required.
Paul was to be recognized next.
Yeah, to a couple of things, what Corey said where, you know, the the towns that are similar. I think when we ask these these questions, that may be one way to kind of get them to offer up a very fashioned approach to our town. When we ask the questions, I think finding out who answers the question, I think is key rather than like what Jack was saying. I don't know which lawyer is going to respond to it because they may give just a generic law firm letter, but it'd be nice to see who says it, but also if they have experience with any given town experience that clear land use, lead use, you know, large houses, if they can add that into those letters, the responses would be extremely helpful because you know, we we are a small town and we're going to have peculiarities with our, the land use that comes up. And if they have experience in other towns similar with those lawyers who have had experience, I think would be extraordinarily helpful. That's all.
You know, on that, Michelle, I think as You know, on that, Michelle, I think as you start to kind of segment the, the questions, I do think one live question should, should definitely be, give us a specific example of a community you've worked with and, you know, that has had a, you know, come up with some kind of a, you know, something that's analogous to what's going on with Cohasset right now in terms of being a small community with relatively small resources that is having an explosion that is literally changing the landscape. There aren't a lot of towns actually that have that, but there's certainly, you know, beachfront towns. Or you look at Newbury Port where the, you know, the beaches are going away and people are losing their home. The opposite, but something like that, that will generate a real analogous situation so that we can understand how they've addressed that. Jack?
Yeah, the classic is show me, talk, talk to, give me a list of all of your clients, not just ones you want me to talk to, but all of them. And that's very important because things will come out. No, no firm, no matter how perfect, will have a perfect record. And sometimes somebody may be very upset. That's all right. We can figure that out, but we need to know that. And, you know, by the way, the, the questions we've gotten from the boards and commissions have been absolutely enlightening. Because they're on the front lines and I, I'm just so appreciative of what they've done. But anyway.
Great, thank you. Unless there's any other questions, what I'd like to do is just ask Michelle just to kind of summarize where we're at and what, where we're going to be next week and going forward. And again, we'll, this is an art, not a science. So we will do the best we can with the timeline going forward. And, 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 you know, if we have to pause or pivot or do whatever, we'll do that. But we'll just be open about these discussions and, 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 you know, take as, as much input as we can along the way. So Michelle, you have the floor.
Sure. So, um, so, so thank you for tonight. I've taken several notes that I will add to the questions that have already been given. What I'm hearing from everyone is land use is number one. We really need to focus on land use and make sure we choose a firm that can represent our community best. So with that being said, I would like to add the questions that were asked tonight to the several questions that have already been submitted. I'd like to send that out to the board on Monday and have you all review it. And then Tuesday, come back with even more questions. Because every time questions are asked, it prompts yet another question. So in no way do I want to speed through this process and, and miss anything because it is so important. So what I'd like to do on Monday is send you a list of all the questions and compile them based on the categories that we deem to be the most important. And then Tuesday night, June 8th, I would like to discuss it and finalize it if possible. So I can get it out to all of the firms on Wednesday and then have them respond to the questions. I'm not sure if you, what I'm hearing is we don't want to do this blindly. We want to know who's answering what, which is fine. And then I would like to invite the candidates in June 17th for a live interview. It's certainly open to the public. It'll be a long day, but what's recommended in best practice is to have them all done in one day. So no one has the leg up of seeing the interview, seeing how it all works. It's best that they all come in the same day. They have an hour time slot. And then after the 17th, my recommendation is the following week you deliberate in either award council or you come back with more questions. It's really up to you on how you want to handle that.
Great, thank you. Michelle, you, you did bring up something that Jack had brought up earlier just about the blind submissions of the, the written questions. I don't know if Carrie, Paul, Corey has any, have any input on that. Carrie did have input earlier. Carrie?
Yeah, I could go either way with it. I do think in some of these situations, we might, even if it's blind, we probably could guess who some of them were just based on style and answers. So I see that that can be a best practice, but I'm okay with whatever the board decides in that regard. I do think we have to really have planned out, maybe each one of us has one question that we ask for each of the interviews. I know we really have to be careful about keeping them equal. So, I mean, we each can maybe have one question or however we want to structure it. Maybe we give them a specific assignment about the introduction we want them to do. Maybe we give them kind of some type of special prompt at the beginning. I'm not sure.
Yeah, one of the ones I submitted was, you know, in five minutes, tell a new board or committee member about the open meeting law. For, for town council, obviously, not, not for litigation, right? Can you, can you keep it to five minutes? You're hired. Corey and then Paul, I see your hand up, Amy, I'll get to you in a few minutes.
I just, you know, been reflecting on the, the blind versus not blind. And I see the reasons why initially we'd want that. But as I thought about it more, you know, I think Carrie and Jack want to make good points. But, but, yeah, I mean, I don't, it doesn't matter who it is. I don't really know any of the board. So it's not like I, I don't really have, not like walking into it with already a bias. However, you know, there are some council, there are some submissions here that come from existing council. And we do have history and we have experience with, with that. And I think that needs to be considered as well in the totality of it. So having it not be blind, to me, seems like the better way forward, even though it does introduce a little bit of bias issues. But I think I'm comfortable with that. And then as for the process, I think I agreed with what Carrie said.
Paul and then Jack.
Yeah, I think the, the unblinded is, is probably good because it gives an idea of what they're saying. We will, will there be some bias? I, I don't, I don't think so. But certainly they, they can certainly complain if there's bias there. But it certainly will give a little more input from, from our point of view of the type of firm that we're looking at and whatever question might be there, I think is, you know, one question per select board member probably is the way to go. Keep it the same question, see what their answers are. All of the other, you know, the written ones will also give a lot more in, information of the style of their law firm and, and experience and things like that. That's all.
Yep, Jack?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, whoops.
Gotcha.
Okay, good. Yeah, yeah, ultimately, th- this is our job. We're, I have a public trust to do a good job. And I think this has been a very good meeting. I'm very impressed with how we've handled the situation moving forward. I would suggest that when we get our, our questions, that we might shoot it out to the boards and commissions to get input. There's just nothing that beats input from people on the, on the, on the front lines. And we've seen that tonight. And I, again, I think we ought to reiterate, we should see if we can get a better way for the public at large to be able to see our deliberations. But in, in any way, I, I think we're moving along very well. And I think we need to get this done.
Thank you, Jack.
We're done well.
Just, just to throw a little thing in there and Amy, you can reveal your second. The, once the governor lifts the emergency, state of emergency on the 15th of June, unless there's legislative action, which is likely not to happen before the 15th, we're going to be starting to meet in public. We, we will not have the option of having virtual meetings when the governor lifts the emergency. So, so the most likely, all of our meetings at that point going forward are going to be in public in the select board office and on TV. And people can participate as they used to. Hopefully the, hopefully the legislature will come up with some kind of hybrid model for going forward. But I, I don't see that happening before the end of the month. So stay tuned on that, but just a little choreography tidbit. Amy, you might be having almost the last word.
Yeah, I just want to say that we focused a lot of our discussion. We focused our entire discussion on land use. And I want to put a plug in for my colleagues on CONCOM because their issues are structurally the same kind of issue as we have, but it's a different expertise. And we really have to respect the fact that it can't be one. It's going to have to be two. I, I don't know a land use lawyer and a, and a environmental lawyer that have the competency of equivalence that is necessary.
Great, thank you. Okay. Any last words on this particular topic?
I have something I could say.
Hold on a sec, I'm gonna hold on.
You know what it is.
Michelle, you're good? You have what you need from us? Okay, Mr. Creighton, it's all yours.
Most should do adjourn.
Is there a second? Roll call, please.
Jack, great. I, and very well done to this board of selectmen. And we, we put glory on ourselves tonight.
Corey Evans advising Jack not to break his elbow tapping himself in the back, but I.
All right, take me.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Good night, everybody.
Bye.
Happy steaks on cushion.
Yeah, happy steak.
Thank you.